The views and opinions in this program are not those of CISA VII or Spectrum.
Good evening, everyone. We took a roll call earlier. We had a five o'clock special board meeting to do mandatory training on harassment. When we did that, all seven board members are present. We do have six in person, and Dr. Brenda Warren is joining us virtually. We're also joined by Superintendent Steve Merly, along with members of his cabinet. Our representative tonight from the inner-city student council is the president from Preble High School, Emily Cupp. Emily, thank you for being here. With that said, I would move on to the pledge of allegiance. If you could please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next up is our mission statement, which will be read tonight by Laura McCoy.
Sorry, do you have it?
I don't know. Yeah, if you've got it, go ahead. Thank you.
We educate all students to be college, career, and community-ready, inspired to succeed in our diverse world.
All right. Moving on to the open forum portion of our agenda, we're starting with our inner-city student council report. Emily, if you have an update for us?
Thank you. The Southwest High School was named a 2020 Best High School by the U.S. News &amp; World Report. There's not much to report on, just because we're in summer break right now, so a lot of events are not going on. So, but summer school sessions have resumed, and we're wrapping up our first session of high school summer school this week. And although we don't have many events going on, I know various sports and student athletes are still participating in contact days, open gyms, weight training, and staying involved in their sports over the summer still.
Great. Thanks, Emily. Moving on to the recognition portion of our open forum, we have one piece of recognition tonight. Superintendent Merly, Steve, I'll hand it over to you for that.
And I'm going to invite our presenters to come forward, along with our recipients. Chris, you gonna come up too? All right. And we're joined by members of the Wisconsin School Safety Coordinators Association, and... Do we want them out here?
Yeah. Yeah, come right to the microphone. There's a button with, looks like somebody's talking. If you push that one, that'll turn your microphone on. There you go.
Okay, am I on now, I guess? Well, good evening, and thank you for inviting us to come this evening. My name is Ed Dorf, and I live at 3375 Pebble Beach Court in Green Bay. And among the various hats that I've worn over my long career in life, I was the executive director for the Wisconsin School Safety Coordinators Association from 2015 until this past April. And every year at our annual conference in the winter, we have for the last 23 years recognized a leader in school safety and security. WISCA, along with the Community Insurance Corporation, have recognized a school safety coordinator of the year, a leader in innovation and best practices around safety and security. Our 2021 selection, obviously sitting to my right here, is Chris Coller. And I'd just like to read a little bit about that. Normally presented at our annual conference in the winter, and of course, something was going on last March, I think you all know about it, it was in the papers. We had to cancel our conference, but we did not cancel our recognition presentations. Chris Coller approached his role and responsibilities as Green Bay's first specifically-designated safety coordinator with a tremendously high level of commitment and energy. He developed excellent relationships with school building administrators and showed remarkable perseverance and consideration with principals as they worked to ensure safety for students, staff, and visitors in schools. Chris was the very first person in this particular role, a role which was held by numerous people in the past, shared among numerous people in the past, two of whom are standing behind me, Mr. Allen Benke and Mrs. Barbara Dorf. They had various parts of the responsibilities that Chris kind of consolidated. He very successfully managed the district's school safety grant, which was just under $2 million over the course of the previous two years. He worked along with several smaller school districts across the state of Wisconsin to share resources and knowledge. His efforts at the district resulted in significant improvements in school safety measures. When Chris began his tenure in the district, the district's worker compensation rates were at an all-time high. He partnered with the HR department and worked to develop a campaign to reduce these numbers. As the district's worker comp claims, their days lost, related injury costs, as a result of all that, those claims were significantly reduced. As I said, his position in the district was a newly-created position, and he was the first person hired into that position. He worked with many others to move major safety initiatives forward. He's been a critical link between the district and the city of Green Bay Police Department, overseeing the district's school resource officers. Chris worked out an innovative agreement with appropriate city officials to allow the district to utilize its staff as certified and trained crossing guards where the city could not provide adequate numbers for crossing guards. He conducted reviews of traffic patterns to improve traffic flow at key congested areas in the schools and at important times, coordinated the gathering of PPE for public safety at the start of the current COVID-19 pandemic. Chris also worked with the district's Food Services Department to successfully launch and implement one of the only school-based Feeding America initiatives. Chris has been a WISCA member since August 2016. He joined us immediately upon being hired into his current position. He has attended each annual conference since then and faithfully attended and participated in module training, earning his WISCA/DPI School Safety Coordinator certification in 2019. I, as the executive director, have requested and received permission to share several documents and procedures for addressing school safety and adherence to DOJ OSS requirements that Chris developed and implemented here in Green Bay. Excuse me. At this time, I would like to reintroduce Jody Tross from Community Insurance Corporation, and she is going to do the actual presentation of the award. Jody?
Thank you. And Ed Dorf is the one who nominated Chris as well. And with me is Al Benke, who is the president of WISCA, just happens to be one of your former employees as well. So I know, and obviously Barb Dorf is one of WISCA advisors as well.
No, sorry. That's what I thought you were gonna say.
Yeah, and also a former employee, of course, as well. So, we would like to, Community Insurance always wants to award this nomination in this award with a $1,000 scholarship. It is to Green Bay Area School District in your honor. So for safety or security measures, we're always thrilled to hear back from what you do with it as well. But this is just the fun check. This is the real one. The one that's cashable. So, and I would like to read the award too, because I think this is important. So 2021 School Safety Coordinator of the Year Award presented to Chris Coller. This award is presented in recognition of your dedicated professional service to safety and security in our schools. Education first, safety always. Congratulations.
Well, I wouldn't be here without everybody that's standing here behind me, because most of them did a lot of the heavy lifting before I came here. So I appreciate that they're the ones that nominated me for this. And I can't take the credit for a lot of the work that I shared, because Barb and Al were very instrumental in creating a lot of those things. I just was fortunate enough to walk in and be able to make some modifications and happily share them out with anybody that needed to use them. So as much as this award is for me, it's for all their hard work as well. Thank you very much.
Congratulations, Chris. Thanks for everything.
Thank you.
All right, goes to the public forum. Just as a reminder, two options for people to provide public feedback during our board members, or board meetings, excuse me. First, registering for a call. So if you register online during our meetings, we can call you and give you five minutes to address the board. We didn't have anyone registered. I do have three forums that I will introduce people to have them come up and speak for five minutes. If anyone has not yet registered, feel free, I think the forums are on the desk outside. You can still fill one of those out and get it over to Beth before the end of this part of our agenda. So with that said, I just would also like to remind everyone in attendance, when you come up to speak and address the board, due to state statute, we're not allowed to respond because items that are not posted on the agenda, but certainly we will follow up with any follow-up items from each of the speakers. So first-registered speaker that I have tonight is Jenna Whetley. And Jenna, if you could start by introducing yourself and giving us your address, and then else you have five minutes.
Yes, my name is Jenna Whetley. My address is 2320 Eldon Court here in Green Bay. And I'm going to be speaking regarding an incident that happened with my son at Edison Middle School this past year. On Friday, June 4th, my son came home from school with a smile on his face and was wet from head to toe. He told me how much fun they had during their end-of-year incentive. They had a boys versus girls water fight, and he made sure to call out that the boys won. He mentioned it being one of the best days of school at Edison. Shortly after I received a call from the school, I answered, and it was Mrs. Sogen, Edison Administrator. She informed me that there was an incident during the eighth-grade PBIS incentive, and Donovan started it. Donovan is my son.
Can I ask what was discussed?
Yep. So Jenna, one of the concerns, so the meeting being recorded in public record, any student information that's shared?
Yes.
So we just wanted to be careful about anyone that shares specific student information in this setting.
I have omitted all student information from my explanation. There is administrative information in here.
I just want to make sure, you as the parent, recognize if you're sharing your son's information, if it's recorded.
Okay.
I just want to make sure you know that I'm speaking.
I do. Thank you so much. I just didn't know why you went and talked.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that
Thank you.
Everything was fine. Thanks.
Okay. So Mrs. Sogen, Edison Administrator, she informed me there was an incident during the PBIS incentive, and my son Donovan started it. The students were provided chalk, and Donovan used the chalk to write "Girls suck" on the school wall. She mentioned his actions led to other kids writing inappropriate hate crime phrases, and the student that wrote those phrases would be reported to the police. She said Edison Administration reviewed the cameras, discussed the incident, and divided the students and their consequences into three phases. Phase one was made up of children that did not write on the wall but observed the incident and chose not to report it. Phase two were students that wrote on the wall, but it wasn't considered discriminatory or potential hate crime. And phase three were students that wrote hate crime phrases. She stated, "My son Donovan wasn't involved in any of the hateful comments," but again mentioned, since he was the initiator, he was deemed phase two. As a result, he'd be suspended for the rest of the school year. My son has never been suspended in his entire life. I voiced my concerns about disparity of the punishment, as I didn't feel the consequences matched the behavior. She stated, "That's the decision that Edison Administration made, but offered to schedule a meeting with me on Monday to go over the incident in detail." After I hung up, I asked my son what happened at school. Now, all of us mothers know when our kids are lying, but there was an obvious look of confusion on his face. I asked why he didn't mention the writing incident at school. He had no idea what I was even talking about. The school hadn't even talked to him or allowed him the opportunity to explain his side of the story before making the premature decision to suspend him. My son is not the girl-bashing vandal that the school made him out to be. Donovan stated this incident happened at approximately 2:20 in the afternoon. When I received a call from Edison, it was 3:20. That means in an hour, Edison staff had the ability to talk to the several girls that complained about Donovan's writing, review the cameras to see what individuals wrote which statements, come up with three phases of consequences and the definition for each, and contact parents, all within an hour, while school's in session until 2:45. It's been brought to my attention that suspension rates at Edison are substantially higher amongst children of color in comparison to their fellow white peers. I know there are committees and other organizations recently created at the school to help promote diversity, equality, and inclusion. If these are the ways Edison Administration is handling incidents, it'll be nearly impossible for these committees to implement change. During our meeting, I also questioned if the only thing written on the wall was "Girls suck", would Donovan have been suspended? We all know the answer is no. The statements written by other children was the reason for my son's suspension, and that's not fair. There is no reason my son should have been suspended for this. And please understand, I'm not the mother living in this falsified world that my son can do no wrong. He'll tell you I'm the first one to hold him accountable. But I feel a more realistic consequence would have been to allow him to come to school on Monday, at minimum, obtain a statement from him, and during his lunch hour, instead of sitting with friends, give him a bucket of soapy water and send him outside to clean up his writing on the wall. I'm no discipline expert, but that seems much more effective than taking a child's last two days of middle school away from him, especially after a two-year pandemic, over some chalk that rainwater can wash away. Another thing I wonder is where the Edison staff were when this occurred. How were so many students able to write so many things on the wall, all while not being supervised? And if teachers were truly writing and drawing on the walls too, which is what I heard, why were they allowed to go to work on Monday? Although staff stated they reviewed the cameras, they didn't sound very informed during our meeting. There were uncertainties about where Donovan was, and they implied that he snuck around a corner to write on the wall. The following day after our meeting, I requested a printout of the incident report and asked Dan Slowey to see the cameras, so I knew exactly what happened. With his misinformation about the other student's suspension and other mishandlings of this, he had lost all credibility for me. He stated that, for liability reasons, I was unable to see the video footage. As a mother, I feel I have the right to witness my child's actions, especially ones that led to a suspension. When I picked up the incident report, I was floored by the description of what occurred. It read, and I quote, "During the eighth-grade PBIS incentive, it was reported that there was graffiti written on the wall with chalk. After reviewing the cameras, it was determined that Donovan started the writing on the walls of the school first and wrote 'Girls suck.' After his comment, other things were written on the walls, including 'I hate Jews,' 'I hate fags,' and 'I hate gays.'" Donovan remained in the presence after he wrote his comment, while all others were written as well, end quote. The word choice of graffiti is criminal sounding. My son is not a gang member marking school walls like this report implies. He's an eighth-grade boy that was provided chalk by the school and did some friendly smack-talking after a boys versus girls water fight. He did not coordinate this hateful vandal group. He simply wrote something on the wall and handed his chalk off. What others chose to write is not Donovan's responsibility, nor should it be a reflection of him. The fact that the incident report includes other individuals' behavior is unacceptable. I'm requesting the board to consider removing this behavioral incident report from my son's records. This is my last attempt before I contact DPI. I've attempted to work with the school with no success. Another student, whose name I will keep confidential, was wrongfully suspended as well. That other student's parent also reached out to Principal Slowey for the suspension concern. Nothing was done. Please reconsider and understand how an overly-exaggerated behavior report with terminology such as what was used here can be looked at as incriminating and even discriminatory years down the line. If my son verbally said "Girls suck," he may never have been even approached by staff. So there's no reason we should be standing before you begging for this removal. Thank you for your attention to this matter. I'm now going to let my son speak.
Go ahead, now.
All right. On June 4th, 2021, we had our PBIS end-of-year eighth-grade incentive. It was a lot of fun. We had a boys versus girls water war. Everyone was getting soaked and having a great time. After we were done with the fight, I was given a piece of chalk. I was given a piece of chalk. With all the excitement from the game and the guys dominating the girls, and good fun, I wrote "Girls suck" on chalk on the brick wall. Everyone laughed at the joke, both my guy and girlfriends. About 30 minutes later, the school bell rang. When I arrived to him, I began telling my mom about all the fun we had and explained to her why my clothes were still wet. A few minutes later, my mom received a phone call, and her face looked unhappy. After she got off the phone, she informed me that it was the school, and I was suspended. I was very confused, because I wasn't confronted with any inappropriate behaviors that would lead to a suspension. I had never been suspended in my entire life. My mom was pretty flustered with everything and wanted to get a better understanding of what happened, so she scheduled a meeting with the principal. Since this happened on a Friday, the meeting wasn't until Monday. I spent that entire weekend worrying about Monday and if the principal would change his mind about my suspension. Maybe writing "Girls suck" on the wall wasn't the best decision, but I definitely didn't mean any harm by it. On Monday, we had our meeting with my principal, Mr. Slowey and Ms. Sogen. I was nervous but ready to finally be able to explain what happened. I was disappointed that I didn't have the opportunity to begin with. Had my mom not requested a meeting with them, I wouldn't even have been questioned about the situation. During our meeting, they listened but were firm in their decision about my suspension. They mentioned that other kids wrote discriminatory and hateful comments on the wall after me, and if I hadn't been the initiator, this wouldn't have happened. It almost felt like they were blaming me for the other students' inappropriate comments, and it was weird how much information the staff had no clue about. In fact, it seemed like they'd done little to no investigating before suspending me. They didn't even know where the situation was or that there was a boys versus girls water fight beforehand. So why am I here? Today, I'm here to make the board aware of mishandling this incident. I was proud to be an Edison Eagle. I've attended Edison for three years, battled through a pandemic, and overcame two years of virtual school. I played basketball for Edison and finished the year with over a 3.0 GPA. I'm in band three, algebra, and accelerated language. I've always tried to be a positive reflection of Edison's culture. The way they worded my incident report made me sound like a criminal, like I coordinated this and was in charge of the other students, which is not true. I'm upset that my last few days in middle school with my friends was taken from me, especially after a year where I spent majority of the time alone at home. Although I will never be able to get those days back, I'm asking for the board to approve the removal of this incident report from my record. This is not an accurate explanation of me or even the incident that occurred that day. Thanks. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. We'll have someone follow up with you.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, our last registered speaker is Jennifer Grant. Jennifer, on the microphone, there's a face that looks like a person talking. If you push that, that'll turn your microphone on. There you go.
Okay. Hi, my name is Jennifer Grant, and I live at 3425 Yorkshire Road. We currently live a few blocks away from Redsmith School and moved here two and a half years ago, with every intention of sending our three children there. We actually left some really awesome neighbors. Hey, Nancy. Two years ago, we opened and rolled our son into Howard Swamaco School District, because my husband and I both work in Howard. Our daycare is in Howard and offered pre-K on-site. We plan to send our son to Redsmith for kindergarten this upcoming school year, but at this time, we are not. The entire school year, I've watched Green Bay School District be two steps behind neighboring districts. I know your thought is, but we're the third-largest school district. We aren't the same as DePere or Howard. But when you look at school sizes and class sizes, you are. Bayport has about 200 less students than Preble, which is your biggest high school, and 1,000 more than your smallest high school, West High. Student-to-teacher ratio at Bayport is 18 to 1, while it's 16 to 1 at Preble and 12 to 1 at West. Yet Howard was in-person most of the year. If we are concerned about COVID spreading, we avoid large numbers of people gathering. So when there are only 13 to 17 people in a classroom in Green Bay and roughly 19 in Howard, they show it can be done. They currently are mask optional for all ages and announced two weeks ago already mask optional for fall, also for all ages. There is even a private school about 20 minutes away in Brown County that was in-person and mask optional all year long. There are a total of 283 schools in Wisconsin allowing masks to be optional, which I have printed out, some going as far back as April, none of which have reported an outbreak. Green Bay is more rural city than Milwaukee and Madison. We need to stop following them. Children in your district are paying the price for your decisions and are now behind. If we have, we as adults and parents have been able to decide if we are comfortable wearing a mask out in the community, in stores and restaurants for the last couple months, why can't we make these choices within our school? You had a choice to wear one today or not. It's time to listen to the parents of this district. It's time to send out a survey and follow the results. Howard's recently sent out a survey. Results showed 80% of parents were for optional masks. Even the teachers came back at 80% for optional masks. You did a survey to your parents about returning in person and didn't even follow the results in fall. You had majority of the parents comfortable with in-person. When will the majority be heard? Who are you listening to? Is it just the teachers' union and not the tax-paying parents who fund the schools? If you decide to follow CDC guidelines of optional masks for vaccinated only, please completely think that through. What you are doing is making parents choose between two harmful options. DHS has issued a warning against vaccinating adolescents, which I also have printed out for you. And more and more studies are coming out about the harmful long-term effects of masks. Masks were never meant to be a long-term solution, especially when they're not being worn properly, like washed daily, switched out throughout the day, and being touched all day by germ-filled hands, not to mention the mental and emotional toll masks are taking. I understand some parents think, "My kid never complains about it," but long-term effects don't always show signs right away. I printed out an article showing studies that children aren't affected by the virus. The vaccine is available for adults and should protect them against the variant. The last thing that many of us here are also concerned about is what is being taught to our children. This needs to be thought about and addressed. When a seven-year-old comes home and asks her mom if she is bad because she is white, and you have a teacher from Aldo at city council meetings saying "election integrity is a form of white supremacy," we should be concerned. Christina Shelton, who was formerly on the Board of Education not that long ago, made a Facebook comment just last week stating, "Giving people facts and letting them make up their own reasoning for those facts isn't the way education works, friend. We wouldn't have a functioning society if that was the case." I am very concerned. Teachers, teaching facts is the only thing teachers should be teaching. I pray the last thing my child at the age of seven sees is race rather character. Seven-year-olds are not old enough to process that, nor should they be taught that. I'm not against teaching our history, the good, the bad, and the ugly. But there's an appropriate age for that. There's a maturity level that goes with that. I was lucky enough to have an alternative option for my children because of the choice we made two years ago, but I'm here today for the parents who don't have the option or the means to get their children to an alternative school. I am also here as an East High alumni who enjoyed going to school in this district, but since so much has changed, about 1,600 students left your district this past year. How many need to leave before you start listening to the parents? We cannot fail these children. It is our job and yours to make sure of that.
I have printouts. Can I give them to you to pass? Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. All right. We will move on to the next agenda item, which is our consent agenda. Look for a motion to approve. Oh, I'm sorry. Before I do that, are there any items on the consent agenda anyone wants to be pulled for discussion? Andrew?
I'd like to remove all of E as a separate item.
Personnel action?
Yes.
Perfect. All right.
I'm sorry, and F.
E and F?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. I forget, do we want a motion to move E and F? No, we don't need a motion. So we'll just move them down to number four. All right, then I'd look for a motion to approve the consent agenda minus items E and F.
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Hi, opposed? Passed seven zero. All right, that takes us to number four items withdrawn from consent agenda. We'll start with letter E, personnel action. Andrew, go ahead.
Yeah, Ian, E, just because of the, I think the number and the amount of, the amount of total money involved in the hiring. And also, also for F, because the, there are, some of the job descriptions involve some of the high-level executive positions. I think both of, both of those warrant a roll call vote. I'm, I'm voting I on both of them. I just think they rise to the level of a separate recorded vote for E and F.
Okay. Uh, any other discussion on those items? All right, then I would look for a motion to approve the personnel action as presented.
So moved. Second.
Any other discussion? Beth, you want to do voice vote? Okay, go ahead.
Becker?
Hi.
Smith? Vanden Hoofel?
Hi.
Leighton and Warren?
Hi.
Warren? McCoy?
Hi.
All right, personnel action passes seven zero and then F. Revised job descriptions. Anything else there? All right, we're ready for voting on that, Beth. Oh, sorry, looking for, thank you. Looking for a motion to approve the revised job descriptions as presented.
So moved. Second.
All right, thanks. Go ahead, Beth.
Warren?
Hi.
Becker?
Hi.
McCoy?
Hi.
Welch?
Hi.
Smith?
Hi.
Leighton and Warren?
Hi.
Vanden Hoofel?
Hi. Motion passes, passes seven zero. That takes us to item number five, the Education Committee Report. We had our first committee's change to a committee structure to, to conduct some of the board business. We had our first education committee a few weeks ago. Andrew serves as our chair of the Education Committee. They had one item on their agenda. Andrew, I'll hand it over to you for any updates or summary of that meeting that you might have.
All right. Thank you. Yes, we had, we had a very, very great and informative meeting at West High School. I think we had a lot of good, a lot of good presentations and questions from, from, from board members, from the, we had a couple of community participants. The, I think one of the main, one of the main points I'd welcome input related to this agenda item if Vic, if you have any, or if we have to add, or if anyone was here for the purpose of this agenda item. Looking to, looking to make IB a stronger, an even stronger option, getting the, having the middle years program, having everything connected through. One important point of the discussion I, I feel was clarifying from people there that this isn't just about how many kids do the full IB deployment. That's a very, that is a very rigorous course of study with, with a lot of work. And there's a lot of ways kids can benefit from, and it was, seemed pretty universal that staff was reporting that there would be, they would be much happier to see a great increase, a doubling in the number of kids who take an AP class during their time at West High than a doubling of the number of kids who do the full deployment, which is a small percentage at just about any, just about any school. Let's see. Brenda or, do you have anything to add, Nancy? Is there anything to add? Brenda? No, okay. Just a couple, I want to make sure I had a couple of the, couple of the important key details in here. Oh, yes. Another, another really important one is exploring a new, or at least relatively new pathway. There is a careers program pathway connected to IB. And the plan for that is to develop a partnership with NWTC and present that and have, and have a full introduction of the, the careers program. What this allows is it, it truly will help make IB be for whether, whichever path you're going. I think there's people who, students who may feel that the, the IB course right now, if they're looking at a specific vocational area, if they're looking to go to NWTC, does this apply to me? And this will allow IB to apply to more, more people. And I think that is a, that's a great step that will increase the, the value of the program. There are some things as this goes forward, there's some requests to have some different practices in grading down the road that would require, that would require board action for waivers of the grading, upgrading and other policies. So those will have to be looked at individually by the, by the board when those come up. And I think, you know, that's something I look forward to seeing, how that would, you know, what that would change, what that would change for people. But I think overall, it was a, we had a lot of, and there were a lot of staff there sharing their experiences from, all the way from elementary through high school. We have the, I believe, I believe the only, the only K through 12 IB program north of Milwaukee, if not the only one at all, north of Milwaukee has one. Okay, so north of Milwaukee, we have the only one. And it's a, it's a great option and it's not, again, it's not just a great option for those kids who want to earn a full IB deployment. That's always going to be a small, relatively small percentage of kids. It's a great, it's a great opportunity overall to, to offer as a district. Any, anything else, Vicki, anything? Oh, thank you. And we had, if we even had a, we had students of all levels share their, share their experience, including I believe, I believe the youngest one to share was second grader going into, going into third and very happy with his, very happy with his experience at Chapel and the family. His family had looked at several schools in the area and I don't know that Chapel is even necessarily their natural attendance area, but they, right, she said it was not, right? They traced into, they traced into Chapel after looking at, after looking at Green Bay schools and Green, presumably Green Bay municipal area of schools from the outside. And they chose, chose Chapel for that, that reason and they, they love it. So I think it's a, it was a good presentation with a lot of good, a good testimony from people who've had great experiences with the program.
Great, right. I guess that concludes the report. Thank you. Thank you, Andrew. Appreciate that. That takes us next to our legislative update. Steve, I'll hand it over to you for some updates on the budget.
So the big one is that Governor Evers signed the budget at the state level. That's a biennial budget for us. One of the things that was a positive aspect of that is we have at least initial reassurances from the State Department of Public Construction that they'll meet the maintenance of effort requirement from the US Department of Ed. For us, for planning purposes, that gives us some level of confidence that we'll have access to our S or two and three dollars. So we're beginning the planning process for that. You'll see an update from the administrative team as we move into the fall, as we look at both encumbering and then beginning to expend those dollars. There is a additional maintenance of equity requirement, but in conversations with them last week and today, there's a level of confidence that depending on how the US Department of Ed winds up interpreting that, that there is room within the current state budget structure to make any necessary changes if the state is determined not to meet those expectations. So that's positive for us. A reminder that there's approximately $72 million in those three streams from the, the various cares and S or dollars that are available. We were taking a conservative approach and not beginning a process to either encumber, obligate, or expend those dollars until we had some level of reassurance that they would indeed be available to us. A reminder that those are a reimbursement process. So we spend first and then get reimbursed for it. So we wanted to make sure not to expend dollars that we didn't have some confidence we'd have the ability to get reimbursed on. So good news in terms of the passage of that, that budget and the opportunities it affords for us as a district.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Steve on that update? All right, very good. We will move on to section seven, the discussion portions. We have two items there. The first is review proposed addendum to the agreement between the City of Green Bay and the Green Bay Area Public Schools. Melissa, you're going to handle an update for us.
As you may know, we have an agreement with the City of Green Bay to provide our school community resource officers. And when we entered into that agreement, we included language that at the time, the city did not have what body worn cameras or body cameras. And the language indicated that at the time the city adopted those body cameras, that the parties would come back and negotiate language around those body cameras. In December, the city, with the help of the Green Bay Packers, was able to obtain body cameras for its officers. We discussed with the city at the time, given that we were on the verge of returning back in person and that they had to train their officers, that we would wait to work out language as an addendum to the contract and then implement those body worn cameras in our schools, starting with the 2122 school year. So we're bringing forward to you to date an addendum for, for that contract that includes language with respect to the body worn cameras in our schools. Importantly, the body worn cameras will remain inactive in our schools. And as officers are performing those really great relationship building functions that they perform every day in our schools. So for the majority of their service to our, our children in our schools and our community, those body worn cameras will remain inactive. But at the point that the officers need to engage in law enforcement activity, just like they do when they are out on the streets and interacting with the public, then those cameras will, will engage and then they will create recordings. As you may know, kind of piggy tailing off of the award that was given tonight, with the grant that the district received, we have greatly increased the number of surveillance cameras we have in our schools. So by and large, most of the things that happen in our schools are being recorded anyway. And so the body worn cameras, well, it will provide another angle or a different perspective. Most of what would be recorded will already be recorded on our surveillance cameras. The body worn camera footage though will remain property of the Green Bay Public, I'm sorry, the Green Bay Police Department. And it is not a pupil record and it will not be the property of the district unless we obtain a copy of that footage. And by and large, we would not be requesting copies of that footage because we're already going to have that through our surveillance cameras. We wouldn't need it.
Questions from Melissa. Melissa, my first question is, as you're looking to adopt, change the language, or there are other examples of this out there? Is this something that other districts and police departments have had to navigate together? Were you able to utilize that?
Yes, through various different national networks, we were able to obtain some model policy or model contract language as well as have discussions with various different school districts across the country. And we're able to get information as to what those best practices would be. The, the Green Bay Police Department has been extremely, extremely thoughtful about the body cameras, as you know, and has provided a lot of research and has done a lot of information gathering before they adopted the cameras that they've adopted, as well as the system that they've adopted.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Laura.
Thank you, Melissa. I just have a couple of questions. Will these body cameras also include audio?
Yes, they include audio.
Once the recordings are made, who will have access to those?
Only the police department has access to them. We would have to go through a procedure to request access through them and that would go through Chris Coller in requesting that access.
Go ahead, Andrew.
Okay, so it does, if I'm understanding number six correctly, though, this, this addendum says that if, if requested by the district, the GBPD shall permit viewing. And then at that, so that, that's correct. It's not a, it's not a negotiation. They have to provide it to us unless, unless specifically forbidden by law?
You're correct.
The other, the other question I have, and I think is my more, more significant question, and it's, it really comes, really comes down to, to one word. It says the BWC may be activated by the RSC during enforcement activities. And it, it doesn't, it doesn't say that they shall or must. This is in four. First paragraph for the BWC may be activated by the RSC during law enforcement. It's right, the last sentence before the, the ABC. So, you know, body, body cameras are, are important for, you know, to, I'm a, two very important key reasons. And, you know, one of them is to, is to have a, have a record if there's misconduct. And another very important purpose they serve is to protect, protect an officer from a, from a false claim, which also happens. So that's important. And I'm just wondering why, you know, why this is only a, a may, because I would, i- if, when it moves from a school contact to a law enforcement, my opinion would be that I want them to have to activate.
That's a great question, Andrew. So if you go back to the whereas clauses on the first page, and the second to last one indicates that the Green Bay Police Department has adopted policy 435, which is going to be attached to the addendum and which sets forth the term and condition for the use of those body worn cameras. And in that policy, in that very specific policy, it describes when the body worn cameras need to be activated. This is what governs when they need to be activated. We did not incorporate every single line item in that addendum because when the police department changes their policy with respect when the body worn cameras have to be activated, we'd have to go back, change the contract, bring it back to the board. And again, it's not for us to, we're not, we're not a party of that policy. It's, it's the police department's policy. The important thing for us was when, when they're not activated. We don't want the body worn cameras activated when, by and large, our school and community resource officers are performing those building relationship activities and working in, in our schools. For, for the most part of the day, they're not engaged in quote unquote law enforcement activities in our schools. That's when the, the policy of the city is going to govern when they need to be engaged.
What it, what it sounds like is that you're, so you're saying that just out of sensitivity for the students that these officers might be dealing with, that you don't, that it's very important to have that be, those, those guidelines be very well delineated? For confidentiality, et cetera?
The, the purpose that the city adopted the body worn cameras was for law enforcement purposes. It wasn't for the relationship building and the everyday activities as to what they're doing in our schools. It's only when they're engaged in those law enforcement activities. And, and that's when the, the police department's policy will govern.
Yeah, I guess, you know, for me, I think, I also think it protects everybody involved if there isn't, I guess if the, the chances for a, whoops, I turned the, you know, I didn't turn the body camera off and some incident happens or a complaint. Incident happens or a complaint is made, that's. You know, both of those would be, you know, both of those would be a bad. Situation. So while I do, I do support the fact that the cameras would not be active for the vast majority of the time because. It's right if they aren't doing law enforcement, direct law enforcement, most of the time. I I still have a strong preference that. You know, we are, we're paying for these officers. We're and we're paying, you know, that's a significant number of officers on the force that. We are paying for info. And I guess I I think, well. If if we're okay with directing them that. You want it to be inactive during the non law enforcement activities, I think we can. We can be directive with them and saying that we, when you transition that to law enforcement, you have to record.
So again, it goes back to their policy and I'm going to read you the language in their policy, which I think will address your concern. Section four thirty five point five activation of body worn camera indicates uniformed sworn personnel. And C S O's assigned a body worn camera will record, will record. All investigative enforcement and call for service contacts. Officers working non uniform assignments will record events when practical. Circumstances when a body worn camera may not be used include but are not limited to officer safety. Prohibits due to a sudden assault or unexpected altercation. Speaking with an informant or community member providing information who requests deactivation of the body worn camera. Prior to providing information, a healthcare provider is discussing medical issues with a patient. While in the hospital waiting for a person in custody to be medically cleared unless their behavior dictates. The need for continued activation of the body worn camera. While debriefing with other officers regarding specific details or tactics of a call for service. When developing a tactical plan or creating a safety plan for a victim. Personnel are prohibited from utilizing the issued body worn camera for personal use. Any other incident where the officer can articulate the necessity and totality of the circumstance. That led to not activating the body worn camera. A body worn camera will activate when an officer is engaged in an emergency vehicle operation.
Okay, so. So there's a clause in there that if the, there's a whole bunch of reasons that an officer might not activate it, most of which seem. You know, obviously pretty reasonable sudden assault or someone's being informed about a crime. So I get that, but then. Then it has a, then it has a loophole at the end. That says if the officer determines in the totality of the situation, they shouldn't have done it, then. It's completed, seems like it leaves it pretty much completely up to the up to the officer. And then. Also. Again, I guess. The we're. It seems that the district has a strong enough position. That regardless of what happens or changes in policy four thirty five, right, we are negotiating that you are not using them during. Routine student contacts, right? We're not letting policies, we're not letting T V P D policies dictate that. We're superseding that with our contract saying that here's when you you can't. Is that fair? If if they amended four thirty five someday to say every single thing under the sun, which wouldn't be a good idea and they won't do that, but every single thing will be twenty four seven body cameras. We are contract with them still says that you can't. So maybe there would have to be a renegotiation. But if their policy four thirty five. Changes further or as it stands right now. That they. You know, an officer can just can explain why they didn't have to do it. I I just think it's best for. Everyone involved that when it becomes law enforcement with for that small percent of the time. That I think we should, I think if we can negotiate when it shouldn't be required, I think we should negotiate when it should be required.
So the language again in the policy indicates. It will be required for all investigative enforcement and call for service contacts, which. Again, will. Be required for those things. The language, any other incident where the officer can articulate the necessity and totality of the circumstances that led to not activating the body worn camera. There are going to be those situations and that will be subject to the the police chief and. The the brass at the police department as to whether they met the test for necessity and totality. We would not. Interject our judgment for that. We're not trained law enforcement officers and we're not trained in in those areas. So there there is going to have to be some circumstances where their judgment is is allowed and that then is subject to review of the police department, not the school district.
It it just seems, it just seems to be a, I mean, I, you know, I've read these over the years, a lot of these things and there's. There's tighter and there's looser wordings of these things. I guess my. My individual opinion, I think that I think it's kind of a wide. Loophole where you don't have to do a lot of justifying to say why I turned it off, right? You could have a much tighter. Policy of why you have to, you know, so. I guess. So what happens if? What happens if the department changes or the city changes policy four thirty five?
They would put us on notice and we could come back and and negotiate language in the addendum.
Would we automatically or if they changed four thirty five or would we have to make a motion if we wanted to guarantee that that would happen?
The the contract is for a year, so we would have the opportunity to terminate and then. If we were not able to negotiate different language, we'd have that opportunity.
Right, but we did we not negotiate? This is a mid year negotiation because of a new element, which is the body cameras. So. If policy four thirty five changed, would that not be a new circumstance to revisit with?
Yes.
Okay, I thought so, but then you said it would only be like you were talking about termination and and things like that, but.
So the language of section. G four A says the superintendent of schools and learning shall be notified immediately of any changes to the policy. Should the city adopt any substantive changes to the policy? The party shall immediately commence negotiations regarding the impact of such change to this agreement.
Okay, so I guess while I have, while I have certain. Concerns that I mentioned, there's I have my. My rule that I'm able to vote yes if I'm in eighty five percent agreement and I think now. I appreciate your time on this. I. I think I've now. Reached that point, but it's it's not a hundred. I would really rather see it, see them just have to activate it. When a, when we move from a school contact to a law enforcement, but. There are mostly pretty good protections to ensure that that would happen, I think. So, thank you.
We're not voting on that this tonight. This is the first time that this item has come before us, so this will get moved forward. For action in our August meeting, Laura.
So just to clarify, I have some of the same, the same concern that Andrew shared about that, about that portion with the may. So is it? That we cannot change it to must? Because it would not be in alignment with the Green Bay Police Department's policy? Is that why we can't change that because of their policy being aligned, being within theirs?
I think it is aligned. I I, the word may and that the policy controls. The word may is because the policy language in. Four thirty five talks about when it will be and then gives the exceptions. So if we, we'd have to essentially copy and paste the language from this policy into our contract. If we were going to use the. The word shall because we'd have to include all those other exceptions as well. And so again, because it says that policy four thirty five controls. They will be activated during law enforcement situations and then gives those other exceptions. So I I I take it as it is in alignment, not that it's not in alignment.
I saw that, at least from what in four thirty five, it seemed like there were some situations in there that would not be necessarily happening in an educational setting. So maybe it's just that it's just a lot of information. It could be more concise related to the district's use of. Body cameras. Thank you.
All right, any other questions on this? All right, we'll move it forward to action at our next meeting. Last discussion item is just something that I want to put on as a follow up from our June meeting on the superintendent evaluation process. So just a little bit of background and history onto how we got to where we are. First of all, we are governed by state statute to evaluate the superintendent. What's what state statute actually reads is that we're required to. Every board in the state is required to conduct an evaluation of its superintendent in its his his or her first year. And then after that, you're not required to do it except for every three years now. That's not recommended by many boards. It's certainly not our recommendation. It's not the recommendation of the model. That we adopted. And so we we've been doing it every year. With that said, we've the the board going back many years has been in search of a robust and and comprehensive. Format for evaluating superintendents. Going back to even before my time on the board. In December of this past year, we looked at a few different models. That we were considering. And those of you who are here remember that we agreed in, I think it was in January to adopt the W A S B. Model. And so that is the the model that is currently in place. I was in, I I watched a webinar that W A S B put on. I was also in discussion. With Dan Murad, former superintendent in Green Bay, who is taking on the project for W A S B. So just some overview into where we are and and sort of what the plan is moving forward. So. We conducted a with Superintendent Merely a formative evaluation in. January, that's after six months in his role. And that process was to give him questions to reflect on and then to have a discussion with the board, a closed session. On those questions that the board selected. Now that we're coming up on year one. What the model suggests is that we we continue with those four questions. We go more in depth. We are required as a board to do two things. One, we need to make sure that all board members are involved in the process and that it's a full board decision, not an individual decision. And the evaluation needs to be based upon the job description and upon our observations. So those are pieces that we need to include in the process. So. Moving forward, what the plan right now is to hold a closed session on our at our August board meeting, August ninth. At that meeting. Steve will prepare artifacts and his responses to the questions. Again, that the board selected in January. I will need feedback from each of the board members. On those four questions in terms of your observations. Again, that has to be a part of the the evaluation. And so we'll do that in August. And then in open session at our August meeting. We will look at the rubrics that are really in place for year two and beyond. And we'll look to identify two to three of the the superintendent standards that we want to focus on for this upcoming year. And then at that time, as a board, we'll agree on those standards that Steve will know about those standards and then we'll use those. Both at the formative and the summative evaluation the following year. So. Just wanted to provide an update on that. I went through it pretty quickly. If anybody has any questions or clarification, feel free to ask. Go ahead, Laura.
The formative evaluation that we did in January is online. People can find it there.
I believe so, yes.
Yeah, under.
Yep.
The superintendent.
Correct.
Office, the office of the superintendent, I believe.
Correct. And that same thing would happen with the summative evaluation.
So it will be given out publicly and people will be able to see it.
Without having to request it, yep.
Eric.
Yeah, Brenda.
Will you be sending us a formal email with those questions? So that we're reminded to give you our feedback.
Yep, absolutely. I'll I'll send it as a follow up to this meeting and then we can. Yeah, we can discuss the best way to to gather that.
Okay, thanks.
I'll send the questions out as a reminder. I mean, they're in the document from the formative evaluation. So I'm not going to make you go and get them. I'll send them over to you. But in case anybody wants to see what those are.
Okay, yeah, thanks.
Go ahead, Andrew.
As part of this process, do. I'm not sure if this is one that we ever put into policy or if it's just an unwritten understanding. Some years ago, there was a decision to proactively that although we don't have to vote and. Contracts roll over if you don't vote by a certain date. That we would nonetheless. Proactively have that vote on the superintendent's contract every year. Is that is that in policy or or is that an unwritten? Unwritten rule.
Honestly, I'd have to to look that up. So I can work with Melissa. We can check that policy and and double check if it's official or if it's just a common practice. So I don't have that answer for you right now, but I can get it to you.
Okay.
All right, any other questions? All right, very good. Then we will move on to number eight. We have three action items for tonight. I would look for a motion. For item A. Go ahead.
I move that the authorization and appointment of an independent hearing officer for the twenty twenty one twenty twenty two school year as presented be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Andrew.
As I, as I've said before, I do, I do have. Concerns now that there aren't certain advantages using the hearing officer. Because of. Because things are in flux with the new federal administration. And what might be happening with the status of certain certain title nine rules and. Just the. Nature of getting getting back to in person school. I'll I'll vote yes on this hearing officer one more time, but. For me, it's not, for me, it's not precedent setting. It's a, for me. It's a necessary situation because of of some uncertainties and whether the board is able to hear. To hear them under current federal. Federal code.
Right. Any other questions or comments? So just as a reminder, this is an annual thing that we would have to approve. We always approve it for one year and we always have to revisit every summer. In terms of the independent hearing officer. All right, we have a motion in a second. No other comment than Beth, I think we're ready to vote.
Our votes have been entered. The motion has carried with all board members voting in favor.
All right, motion carries seven zero. Look for a motion to approve item B. Okay, go ahead.
Move that the revisions of rule four five seven point seven procedures for student expulsions as presented be approved.
Laura, just one, you said four five seven, I believe it's four four seven.
Yes.
Okay, just. Yep, no problem.
Sorry about that.
Yep. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Oh, so just for clarification, the rule is four four seven point four. Yep. All right. Any other discussion? All right, Beth, reset.
All votes have been entered. The motion has carried. All board members have voted in favor.
All right, motion carries seven zero and the last action item, long range library plan. This is again a requirement for us. I don't know if Steve and or Josh want to say a few comments.
Yes, I I have some helpers here too. So you are correct, Eric. This is a statutory requirement under. P I eight oh one. That each school district needs to have. That each school district needs to have. Unfiled written long-range plan for library services development, which has been formulated by teachers, library and audiovisual personnel and administrators. And approved by the school district board. Um, so we're at the end of that process here. Um, but I would. First like to introduce some of the people that worked on this. These are. Our elementary, elementary coaches, um. For, um, librarians. We've got Sarah and Marta here. And they worked for about four years on this long-term, um. Long-range library plan. So they would be the ones, um. To to field any questions about the, the content of the library plan. Should you have any? I would just like to thank them for their work on this. It's a, it was a huge undertaking.
So I have, I have one question. Lot changes in four years, that things move rapidly, uh, all over the place. Uh, so how, what was the process like to, to start this four years ago? And then to to get here today, I mean.
Challenging question. Um. I know it was started prior. Mostly prior to our involvement, so a lot of people were involved in this. Well before we started with Vicki. We started with Vicki working on it in November and worked all the way through June. Just piecing it together and putting together a lot of pieces that other people worked on. So it was a big group effort.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? Great, thank you very much for all your time and effort put into that. All right, I would, uh, look for a motion to approve our long-range library plan.
I move that the long-range plan for library services department as presented be approved.
So, uh, any other discussion there? All right, Beth, we're set to vote online.
All votes have been entered. The motion has carried. All board members have voted in favor.
All right, motion carries seven zero and that ends our action items. Um, going down to number nine then, um. To agenda setting in our board meeting schedule. Um, if you take a look at the attachment there, it'll show the, uh, the month of July. Ironically, uh, July twenty sixth, uh, we have scheduled a special board meeting at five o'clock. Uh, the purpose of that board meeting will be to. Uh, look at policy recommendations regarding our mask policy. Um, so July twenty sixth. Um, we will be doing that and then, um. We do have, uh, August ninth, uh, would be our next, uh, board meeting, closed session and regular meeting on August ninth. Any questions on that? Go ahead, Andrew.
Um, yeah, since we're in a new system, I guess I would like some clarification. I had. I had requested this, uh, I had actually requested, uh, masks as an agenda, as an agenda topic for tonight. Um, I realize that if, if that had come up, it's very likely that a majority of the board may have chosen to. Have it go through a committee or have it or hold and get more information. I I get that. But I guess I am, I am just wondering in this new, new system, you know, if, um. I guess to me, it's one thing to say, well, we're going to put it on a calendar for a certain month if it's not something that's, you know, imminent. But this, I I guess part of the reason that I was hoping to at least, at least have it on. On this agenda for discussion, whether even though it would probably not be voted on till later. Was bef, part of it was before, to be before the second round of summer school. So I guess I just want to get some. Some clarification on. Like how, how this works and and how this is, you know, how this is going to be happening if, again, if something has, is, you know, more time sensitive. Instead of long-range strategic.
Yep. So Melissa, just, uh, keep an eye on me to make sure that I don't go off of something that's not on the agenda, but I want to just answer his question with regard to agenda setting. Um, so, uh, a month ago, uh, maybe a little bit less than a month ago, the board sat down and, uh. Looked at this issue and voted six to one in favor of keeping masks in place. Um, your then request, uh, came up three weeks later to discuss it again. Um, I worked with the vice president and the superintendent to figure out the best way to proceed with looking at the issue again. Again, knowing that we just took a vote on it, uh, just a few weeks ago. Um, at that time, we had looked at, uh, going to the operations committee, gathering the information. Um, that would be required to to bring that forward and to discuss that. And, uh, making sure that we had an opportunity for everyone to have the information that they needed. Again, if this was, uh. Was something that, uh, we hadn't addressed, you know, mo- most recently. Um, you know, maybe would have, have seen that, but, uh, July twenty sixth was the. The, the next time. So I mean, I, it was certainly taking into consideration your request. Um, and and also the, the most recent time in which the board had already discussed this item.
So I guess, I guess part of it is, and I guess I was, I, maybe I should have. Thought of this at the previous one. I think another part of it is. You know, maybe, maybe there's more. Maybe there's more up in the air about. About summer school, but I. I think to say what your intent is. For the fall is important with an understanding that if things change, we, more than once, we've said if things. We're making this change, we're opening more, we're doing this more. What if, you know, what if COVID changes and comes back in high numbers, then we're gonna, then we're gonna look again. So I just want some, you know, clarification about how, um, how that decision was, was made. Uh, two weeks is certainly better than six, but. I would have liked to, you know, my hope was that maybe, maybe there would have been some consensus around saying our plans for the fall. Even if the rest of it had to wait, but.
Yeah, I guess I would also just point out, Andrew, that I was the, the person who voted, uh, to make masks optional. So if I. If I wanted to continue to discuss this, I could discuss, scheduled special board meetings every day, uh, until the vote went the way that I supported. Uh, so, um, I certainly would have been in favor of, of having that discussion again sooner, but again. Um, taking in a lot of factors into consideration, July twenty sixth was, uh, the best time to do that, so. All right, um, with that being said, uh, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All in favor? Hi, opposed? All right, and that ends our July board meeting. Thanks, everyone. We'll see you in two weeks.
You have been watching the Green Bay area public school districts board of education meeting. Please visit the school district's website, W W W dot G B A P S dot org to view the program again. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling nine two zero. Four, four, eight, two, zero, two, five, or by email at communications at G B A P S. Dot org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.